Hello, and I'd like to extend a warm welcome and thank you for joining our presentation tonight. My name is Cindy Schufelt and I am a School Support Counselor with Safe Schools and Wellbeing. And I'm with the Safe Schools with Thames Valley Sorey District School Board. And tonight I'm here with my colleague Megan, who perhaps would like to introduce herself now.
Welcome, thank you for joining. My name is Megan Pallett and I am a member of the Safe Schools and Wellbeing Team. And my role is an implementation coach, so I have the opportunity to partner with a number of schools in the board. And I collaborate with staff to implement essential conditions for learning, which you will be learning more about tonight. So, thank you for joining.
So, we're very fortunate to be a part of this collaboration between local school boards and community partnerships to host the Family Wellbeing Workshops. Presentations are offered online throughout the year with varying topics and presenters. So if you click on the link in this slide, it will take you to our website where you can find the list of upcoming presentations. And we will provide more information about the key contacts persons at the end of our webinar tonight. So at any time you'd like to use this feature to ask questions, we can rely these to our speakers at the conclusion of their presentation. I also would like to note, it's very important to know that you are aware that the session is being recorded. And as such, we would not ask that you share your name or identifiers to protect your privacy. If you have any questions that are specific to your family's unique needs, we would offer you contact information after the presentation. And we would follow you up, follow up with you at a later date. So tonight, so I'm very thrilled tonight to announce our presenters from Safe Schools and Wellbeing. Joining us tonight is Caitlin Chow, Learning Coordinator, Leslie Robertson, Learning Coordinator, Dennis Wright, Superintendent of Education, Warren Zavarella, Systems Principal, and Lucas Anderson, Manager of Student Mental Health. And I will pass it over to them to begin the presentation.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. Welcome Cindy. And we certainly are excited to be here as a large number, but certainly not all of our Safe Schools and Wellbeing Team represented here on camera tonight. So we, I know Cindy had the opportunity just to kind of briefly mention names, but we also just want to offer the opportunity for everyone to introduce themselves, what their work kind of entails, or what they're looking forward to tonight.
Excellent. And my name is Dennis Wright. I'm the Superintendent of Student Achievement with Thames Valley. I also have responsibility for Safe Schools and Wellbeing, which covers all disciplinary processes, support processes related to progressive discipline and mental health. Pleasure to be with you this evening.
And my name is Lucas Anderson. I'm our Manager for Student Mental Health here at the Thames Valley District School Board. I work very closely with this wonderful team of individuals. I am here to oversee and sort of supervise part of our Safe Schools and Wellbeing portfolio, our mental health professionals that work with the board. We really help to support in school those sort of tier one, universal preventative and preventative and mental health promotion events and activities, as well as resources and supports that are offered through our schools as well too. And that is our team. So you will see us in many different places. If you've seen our triangle, our essential conditions for learning, that is a hallmark of the work that we do and the goals that we aim for within each and every school.
And hello, my name is Warren Zavarella. I'm the System Principal for Safe Schools and Wellbeing. I also work with this team and support educators and schools and principals as we work to establish the essential conditions for learning in schools and making sure that schools are great places for, for the entire community.
And my name's Caitlin Chow. As Cindy mentioned, I'm one of the two learning coordinators for our team. I am very fortunate to work on a number of projects throughout the board. In addition to that, similar to Megan, I am also an implementation coach. So I get to work directly with many educators, administrators, any school staff really. Again, supporting with the tier one approaches that were mentioned.
And I'm Leslie Robertson, and I'm very happy to be with you all this evening. I have been working on creating resources to support understanding bullying prevention in Thames Valley for educators, students, and now excited to be here this evening to have an opportunity to share with parents and caregivers.
Fantastic. So our purpose this evening is a couple of main points. We want to make sure that we develop a communal understanding of the definition for bullying, especially as it relates to ministry understanding. We also want to provide insight into how decisions are made. We recognize that there can be a lot of questions or concerns and our hope is to provide you with some clarity. We also want to make sure that you know where you can go to get help if you're concerned about your child in any regard to bullying. And then lastly, what we really want to do tonight is highlight Thames Valley's bullying prevention strategies and what we do to be more proactive and addressing those concerns.
So we're going to start by defining what bullying is. We know that there are often concerns from caregivers as it relates to their child's safety at school. The word bullying is often used when there is a conflict between students. However, it is important that as a community, we have a clear understanding of what constitutes bullying. Based on the guidance from the Ministry of Education, bullying has to be something that is targeted at specific students or groups of students, involves a power imbalance, has the intention to cause harm, and is something that has occurred on more than one occasion, making it repetitive in nature. When we talk about the idea of a power imbalance, some examples could include age differences, differences in physical or cognitive ability, or differences in social power and credibility. What isn't bullying? By contrast, we know that harm can also occur when students are teasing one another, being rude, being mean, or when there is a conflict or disagreement. If these are one-time incidents, they would not meet the criteria for bullying. However, these forms of harm are still unacceptable and should be addressed by school staff. We also recognize that if these forms of harm were to continue and become repetitive over time, they may start to cross the threshold into the realm of bullying.
At the Thames Valley District School Board, our top priority is the safety and wellbeing of all students. We know that bullying can have serious and long-lasting effects on all those involved. All students deserve to learn in a place where they feel safe. In order for us to address bullying, it's important to report it when it happens. Every incident is taken seriously and addressed so that learning occurs, relationships are restored, responsibility is taken, and school safety is maintained. But what does it mean to address bullying? What sorts of things do schools have to consider? What do they have to do? There are a lot of factors that go into place when making decisions. Principals have to weigh a variety of factors, including progressive discipline, mitigating factors, and human rights. When addressing and responding to bullying, school boards and schools must follow numerous provincial policies and legislation. One of the main guiding policies is PPM 145, which came out in 2018. This policy speaks to the use of progressive discipline in schools. This approach provides a range of options to address behavior, including prevention programs, interventions, supports, and consequences to address inappropriate student behavior. It might look like an apology for a hurtful or disrespectful comment, a review of the expectations, a meeting with parents or guardians, anger management and counseling, all the way up to suspension or expulsion from the student from school. When making decisions related to progressive discipline, administrators must also consider something called mitigating factors. These factors, these are factors that add complexity and nuance to the decision-making, which can impact the outcome for those involved. This does not mean no consequences, however, it can change how the situation is addressed. The Ministry defines mitigating factors as whether the student has the ability to control their behavior, whether the student does not have the ability to understand the foreseeable consequences of their behavior, or whether the student's continuing presence in the school creates an unacceptable risk to the safety of any person. The Ontario Human Rights Code also applies to all aspects of our system. This provincial law outlines seventeen protected grounds as listed here on the screen. When human rights are a component of bullying, there are additional responsibilities at the school level. Given the beautiful diversity of Thames Valley, it is important to note that each of the protected grounds are treated equally. There is no hierarchy amongst the protected grounds. Sometimes we encounter situations where there are competing rights or a conflict amongst protected grounds. Given the complexity of these situations, Thames Valley staff consult with our Human Rights and Equity Office and their team to ensure that the dignity and rights of everyone are upheld. If students or families have concerns as it relates to human rights, they are also able to reach out to the Human Rights Equity Office themselves.
So what do you do if you're concerned? It's, we want to share a little bit of information with you about this. It's important for students and caregivers here tonight to know that it is the school staff's job to deal with bullying and all incidents that, all incidents should be reported. Speaking to a caring adult within the school, such as your child's teacher, their coach, guidance counselors, school support counselors, learning support teachers, EA, school administrators, helps them ensure that school safety is maintained, relationships can be restored, and learning can occur. You and your child may feel most comfortable speaking with someone your child has a strong relationship with. So it is really important for you as parents and caregivers to find out who is that caring adult for your child in the building, being able to ask them that question. It takes a lot of courage to be able to report bullying and as a caring adult, we must really, really be ready to listen to that information as it's coming forward. So if you or your child don't feel comfortable speaking directly to school staff, considering using the anonymous, consider using the anonymous reporting form, you can actually find that on the individual school website if you have any, and if you have any concerns about safety and wellbeing of your child or that, or others. The information you provide is automatically sent to the school administrator. So the more detail you provide, the more information you provide, the better they can support you in finding a resolution to the situation. You know, providing your name will allow for updates on action taken to yourself, but it is not a required piece of the form as it is an anonymous reporting form. If you're concerned your child is causing harm in some way, it is also important to be curious as to why they're having this type of relationship challenge as well too. This is meeting a need or achieving a desired outcome for this, for this child, for that child in the moment. And if the behavior is not addressed, this can actually impact the child's understanding of what is right and wrong as they continue to age, as well as impact the variety of tools outside of power and aggression that they can use to reach that outcome and have that need met. Ongoing and repeated use of power and aggression to meet a need or achieve a desired outcome can increase the likelihood of that behavior continuing in the future. So that's important to know. Your child may actually really need a lot of support in changing the way that they use their power and expanding their understanding of how they can meet their needs through different means. It is really important that they know you believe in their ability to be able to change their behavior. And we really want to focus on acknowledging positive behavior as that is happening for that individual. They need support and understanding the impact of the action, both towards others, but also really importantly towards themselves as well too, and their own wellbeing. Reaching out to a caring adult at the school that can help, can really help support this learning for your child as well too. So I do really strongly encourage people to do that.
So what response can you expect from the school when bullying is reported? In response to reports of bullying, parents and caregivers can expect the following responses: that concerns are validated in a supportive way, that honors the voice of those reporting the bullying, frequent communication with parents and caregivers at all stages of the investigation, that's before, during, and at the end, and to understand the outcome or the results of the investigation, to understand the steps taken to ensure the child or the children are safe at school. This is an important step in maintaining a trusting relationship with families. This could include a referral to a school support counselor as well, and to understand the restorative steps that are taken to repair the relationship that was broken. And finally, who parents and students can turn to should there be further concerns?
So it's, it's just important to mention that bullying does really have the potential to impact mental health, the mental health and wellbeing of our students and our children. So it negatively, negatively affects students' learning attendance, safety and sense of safety, self-worth, and overall mental health and wellbeing. Students who experience bullying may suffer from headaches, stomach aches, and low self-esteem. They also may want to avoid school, and this can really have a significant risk for their academic performance and increased feelings of isolation for students as well too, for children as well too. Children who are being bullied are at higher risk of experiencing depression and depressive symptoms as well. Children spend really a significant time at, at school and experiencing bullying may not end when the school day finishes as well, especially with the existence of social media. We know that prolonged exposure to stress can have a real impact on your overall sense of wellbeing, both mentally and physically as well. So students who are causing harm are also sending the message that there's a need that's not being met for them. And it's important that we approach bullying behavior with curiosity as to what is this need, and which could include mental health supports. And we do often find that, that is happening both for individuals who experiencing bullying, but also for individuals who are causing harm towards other people. I do really want to emphasize that there are mental health supports that are in the building within each of our schools that students have access to, that can provide a lot of really great support and being able to develop coping skills and being able to navigate some very tricky interpersonal dynamics within their social environment. I also want to emphasize that caring adults at the school can also direct students to crisis and mental health resources in the community. We have a lot of different resources within our Thames Valley community that are accessible to children and youth and families as well too, that can support individuals with their mental health. On the sheet, on the page right here in front of you, you'll see a crisis resource page that has a number of different ones that are sort of divided by region, but just to sort of name a few, we have things like our Reach Out Crisis Line in the community, we have our Tandem Line as well too, which are both virtual services using phone and text-based supports. We also have access to organizations like Welkin or Vanier or Thames Valley, or Canadian Mental Health Association of Thames Valley, which all provide mental health resources that are accessible to children, youth, and families in the community who may be struggling with their mental wellbeing.
Next, we'd like to take you through some of the prevention strategies that Thames Valley has in place to combat bullying. And so thinking of bullying as a relationship problem, it's something that requires a relationship solution. So in Thames Valley, we prioritize relationship building and something we call the Essential Conditions for Learning. And this is one of our prevention strategies against bullying. The Essential Conditions for Learning framework promotes relationships, safety, connection, and regulate, or regulation to support student learning. Because when students are feeling safe and connected to their teachers, their learning, their peers, and their school community, they are better able to regulate and interact with others in healthy ways and then also able to learn. So we'd like to take a couple of moments to watch this two-minute video that will introduce you to the Essential Conditions for Learning.
Did you know that Thames Valley has a framework called the Essential Conditions for Learning? You might have seen this picture around your school and you might be wondering what it means. In order to do my best learning, I need to feel safe at school and connected to the caring adults in the school.
It's also important that I feel regulated when I'm at school. This means that there is predictability and structure at school and in the classroom so that my friends and I feel emotionally safe in our learning environment.
All of these essential conditions for learning are built through healthy relationships with adults and other students. When we take time to get to know one another and find out what makes us unique, it reminds us that we all play an important part in our school community.
So what does it mean to feel safe at school? When I think of safety, I think of safety from things like getting hurt, bullying, discrimination, and racism.
When I think of safety, I think of safety to being my authentic self and feeling safe to make mistakes, which we all know is how we learn.
What about connection? We all know that humans and especially kids are social beings. Everyone wants to feel like they belong. When we feel connected to our teachers, our classmates, and our school community, we're more excited to learn.
One way I feel connected at school is when the book we're reading shows pictures of people who look like me and my family.
I feel connected to my teacher when they greet me at the door with a big welcoming smile.
When we feel safe and connected at school, it's a lot easier for us to manage our emotions and stress or get regulated.
Everyone experiences a wide range of emotions throughout the school day. I'm learning to notice these feelings in my body so that I can choose which regulation strategy works best for me.
I'm learning more about how my brain works so that I can explain to others what I mean when I'm feeling overwhelmed or upset. Things don't always go smoothly though, and we all make mistakes.
When this happens, we can use Essential Conditions for Learning as a reminder that we need to rebuild safety and connection so that we can feel regulated.
When a caring adult helps me with this, I can then talk through the problem and learn from my mistakes, which makes me feel ready to learn again. After all, that's what school's all about.
It's important for us to understand that the, establishing the Essential Conditions for Learning are work that we do throughout the entire school year. And it is work that is done through your school's safe and inclusive school plan. And we're going to talk a little bit more about the safe and inclusive school plans in a few moments later in this presentation. But we'd just like to take a moment to go through the Essential Conditions for Learning just a little bit deeper. As we stated earlier, we know that students learn best in a safe and caring environment. And based on research, this is why we have created the Essential Conditions for Learning Framework. And it promotes relationships. You'll see that the blue of relationships wraps around the entire triangle. And it's through relationships that we build safety, connection, and regulation to support student learning. Because when students are feeling safe and connected to their teachers, their learning, their peers, they're better able to regulate, interact with others in healthy ways, and learn. And all of this supports their mental health and overall wellbeing. So we are working hard this year to bring this framework to the forefront of everything we do in all of the learning environments in Thames Valley, not just in our classrooms. And maybe you've even seen this framework or the, the triangle around your school. So we'll just take a moment to talk about each of the different conditions.
Perfect. And I know I've got the next slide. I also just want to highlight on this slide as well that in the creation of the Essential Conditions for Learning, those three main pillars listed on this slide as well, the trauma-sensitive approach or trauma-informed approach that we really are trying to better understand and develop, but also these pieces about the equity and cultural safety and restorative practices. So in terms of relationship, we've really tried to break this down into what is it or what are they? And then why does it matter? So as Leslie pointed out, the foundation for the Essential Conditions for Learning at the bottom is relationships. But it's really important to note that it goes all the way around the triangle and that it's an integral part. None of this triangle is meant to be hierarchical. It is something that we flip through between different levels and that we have to be able to move freely within them. So in terms of why do they matter, healthy relationships between students and their peers, teachers and school staff are key to student belonging. And when students feel that they are part of a community at school, they're more likely to participate in school activities. They identify with the school values and invest in their work and have a great sense of wellbeing.
And if we look at safety, or when we talk about the essential condition feeling safe, we're not just thinking about physical safety, but emotional safety, psychological safety, spiritual safety, and others as well. And we want students to feel safe to be their authentic selves so that they can feel safe to take risks, ask questions, get involved, and as well as safety from harm, we want students to feel safe from bullying, discrimination, and racism. And this is important because research shows us that when humans feel threatened or that lack of sense of safety, there is a struggle to access cognitive abilities. And so that means it's really tricky to problem solve or communicate effectively, or even empathize with others. And those are sort of all necessary skills for learning. Our schools are wonderfully diverse and we need to be intentional in creating ways for all of our students to feel safe and welcome in their classrooms and school communities.
So when we think about connection or this level of be connected, we need to recognize that there, these are the little moments in time. They don't have to be big, they don't have to be long, but it's those moments where we feel seen, heard, or valued. That moment where somebody recognizes us. And it doesn't always have to be verbal. Sometimes it's that smile, sometimes it's that little, I see you, or a thumbs up, or you know, that excited, yeah, you did it, the high five. But this is really, it's not just the foundation of that relationship, it's those moments where you take time to check in with somebody, right, to really pay attention to how they're doing in that moment. So when people see, when, we know that it matters because when people feel seen, heard, or valued, they're also more willing to engage. It also helps us as educators and as Lucas kept mentioning, this idea of a caring adult, when we are connected with our students and we're checking in, we're better able to understand when something isn't right or when just something feels off. So it's really, really important to all of our work.
Next is regulation. And so regulation refers to our ability to manage our emotions or, and responses to the things that we experience and the stress that we experience throughout the day. The ability to regulate is not something we are born with. It is something that we learn and that we need to be taught. And it's a lot easier for children and adults to get regulated when they feel safe and connected to a caring adult who can share their calm and co-regulate with them. If you just think of, you know, a crying baby, when a parent comes and picks up the baby and holds the baby or rocks the baby and shares their calm and reassures the baby that everything is going to be okay, the baby is able to learn to regulate themselves and, and manage the, the stress or the emotions that they're feeling at that time. And so this really matters because when we are just regulated, as we mentioned earlier, our brains are not, are essentially in survival mode. And we can lose access to some of our cognitive abilities, such as problem solving and empathy. And that can make it very difficult to learn or to relate to others in healthy ways. So in our schools, we, we are teaching students to learn to pay attention to the feelings or the sensations in their body that happen throughout the day. We are also explicitly teaching students strategies to help them regulate when those big emotions arise. And that might look like movement breaks or breathing exercises, distraction techniques, getting a sip of water, visualizations. And it's really important that children have an opportunity to explore and practice these regulation strategies when they are feeling calm so that they know what works best for them. Because things that can help return students to those feelings of safety and connection are unique to them. And these strategies are learned best through a relationship and through co-regulation with a caring adult. Now, we know things don't always go smoothly. At school, conflict occurs and unfortunately bullying occurs. But we can use these Essential Conditions for Learning as a reminder that we need to rebuild that safety and connection for both the student who has been harmed and the student who has caused the harm, so that they can feel regulated and able to learn. And as parents and caregivers and the caring adults in our schools, they can help students talk through the problems and learn from their mistakes and start to develop the healthy relationship skills that are necessary to prevent bullying. And so this is how we see that establishing the Essential Conditions for Learning is, is a really a relationship solution or a prevention to bullying, which we see as a relationship problem.
So another important strategy that all Thames Valley schools are involved in that have in place to prevent bullying and promote positive school climate and culture is, we were just talking about it a little bit earlier, it's our Safe and Inclusive Schools Plan. So sometimes we refer to it more like as a, as a CISP, the acronym. This plan replaces what was formerly called our Bullying Prevention Intervention Plan or BIPIP or as well as the Safety and Accepting Schools Plan. So this plan is completed annually and you're going to see it on your screen here as well too, by every elementary and secondary school in our board. It is a really important work. This important work is facilitated at the school level and it is done by a school-based team. The team is comprised of students, it has family members involved, it has teachers involved, it has support staff in the building involved, community partners, and the principals and our vice principals of the school. And the plans, it really involves two different components. One is the school goal, which you're going to see on your screen, and the other is a home and school and school connection goal as well too. So I really want to encourage folks, if you're curious, if you're like, I've never seen our, the CISP before, the Safe and Inclusive Schools Plan, you can find out more information about this. you can find out more information about this by visiting your school website, Safe Schools, your, your school website on the Safe Schools section. Or you can reach out to your school administrator about how you can also become a member if you're interested in doing so. And so I also want to quickly talk with folks about a couple of partnerships that we have here at the TBDSB that are really helpful when we're talking about bullying intervention prevention. And so we have a couple of partnerships, they've been really wonderful community resources, really instrumental in supporting bullying prevention in our schools. The first one I want to mention here is St. Leonard's Community Services. So there's a couple of different ways in which St. Leonard's and the TBDSB are involved. One is related to what we call Peer Power. And so Peer Power is geared towards students, really supporting students in classrooms and really is classroom-based programming that helps to empower students around conflict resolution and building conflict resolution skills that are going to help them in interpersonal conflict that they might be experiencing in schools. And so Peer Power has been in a number of our different classrooms and our different spaces, being able to offer that to our students as well to, and helping them develop those social emotional skills and helping them develop those skills around conflict management. The other part of St. Leonard's work is our restorative practice approaches work. And so this actually is a program with St. Leonard's that helps to support students. It, it gives an opportunity to have some of those relational healing, restorative conversations between students who may need that support, who might be experiencing interpersonal conflict and may really benefit from having somebody to help support with mediation and help to support with having that conversation in a meaningful way. And so we have individuals from our St. Leonard's team working in a number of our different schools, helping to support these different areas and helping to support students through these challenges. Also, another organization that we work with is the International Institute for Restorative Practices, IRRP, IIRP. So restorative practices more generally, it's a field of social sciences that really studies how to strengthen relationships between individuals as well as social connections with community. So it really is talking about how do we restore and develop and secure really strong relationships with one another, even in the presence of, even in the presence of conflict. And so IIRP has worked with Thames Valley District School Board to be able to train over fifteen, approximately fifteen hundred TBDSB staff in restorative practices. So being able to use a lot of this sort of work in schools to help to promote this as as a culture of restorative practice in school, as we mentioned earlier, it's one of our, our pillars of support within our school environment. Restorative practices, many more other opportunities as well too. And, and starting in, in January, we'll really be focusing with many of our elementary educators as well too, in being able to dive deeper into restorative practices. The very last one I want to mention just quickly is our partnership with Public Health as well too. You see it here on your screen, it's called the Fourth R, but with Public Health, we call it Healthy Relationships Plus Program. The Fourth R. And, and what it is, is our, our public health partners actually come into school and host groups within the schools that help to talk about healthy relationship building as well as a wide variety of other topics that help to support students in being able to build their understanding of interpersonal relationships as well as their own wellbeing as well.
If you're looking for more information, we, there are also some great online resources that can support you and your child. PrevNet is one of them, and PrevNet actually stands for Promoting Relationships and Eliminating Violence Network. And this is a Canadian research and knowledge hub that brings together researchers and national organizations. And they work together to build research capacity and assess and look into youth relationship problems like bullying or dating violence. And they promote, they create and promote evidence-based programs and effective policies across Canada to address and reduce youth interpersonal violence and promote healthy relationships. There is a part of their website that is dedicated to supporting you as parents and caregivers. There's also parts of their website that are there to support specifically students as well as educators. And you can get information on their website about the risks of bullying, about cyberbullying, about the role of you as parents and caregivers in supporting children who have been bullied or harmed, or, or supporting your child who might have been bullying or causing harm. Another one is Media Smarts, and this is another Canadian nonprofit organization based in Ottawa. And it focuses on digital and media literacy programs and resources. And they also have an entire section of their website for parents and caregivers that is very user-friendly. And it gives you the ability to search for information and resources by topic on the left-hand side. And it would have particularly helpful in this context. It has particularly helpful resources regarding cyberbullying and healthy online behavior. And then all of our educators in TBDSB in our schools were encouraged to, have been encouraged to use these online resources to support them in addressing bullying awareness and prevention conversations at school. You could also visit our Thames Valley website for the information that was shared today. A lot of the video that we watched on the Essential Conditions for Learning, links to these websites, our crisis numbers are all posted there. So if you just go to TBDSB and under the Safe Schools category, there's a section for family and caregivers.
Fantastic. So we just want to thank you again for joining us this evening. We recognize that you took time out of your day to come and hear about this information, which we know is important to our entire community. And we hope that this, we hope that this presentation has provided you with a clear understanding of what bullying is, insight into how decisions are made at Thames Valley when a bullying incident occurs, information on where you can get help if you're concerned about your child, and lastly, a better understanding of some of the prevention strategies we have in place. So at this point, we move on to our questions, question period. And so we're going to ask Megan to come back and join us as well to see if there's anything in the Q and A. And also at this point, for those who maybe aren't able to access the Q and A, depending on what device you're on, Megan will work on allowing the microphones, just for those who would rather ask their question that way.
Okay, at this time, if you would prefer to unmute, you have the ability to ask a question verbally or the Q and A feature is still available.
All right.
Yep, nothing coming in yet. And thank you all for attending tonight.
So we'll pass it back off then to Cindy, who is just going to close this out with a little bit of the last piece of information regarding key contacts. But we also really invite you to provide feedback for this survey. So Cindy will share more about that as well.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Caitlin, Leslie, Dennis Warren, and Lucas for such an informative presentation during our Bully Awareness Week.